Considering it's happening in a couple of weeks, um, months. The next report, yes.
Quick question, does that include?
When you, sorry, for my VP of comms, can you say your name and district?
Senator Beck from pathology, um, does that, does university health insurance include both the student blue plan and the RATA plan?
Yes, so there's specifics on here and then there's other exceptions to get like lower costing insurance for these students, but it does include that.
Uh, pardon? Senator Mersman from anthropology, does this apply both to international students who are RATA and to those who do not have an RATA position who might be on fellowship elsewhere in the world?
Yes.
Okay, so even those who?
That I actually don't know about.
Gotcha, I was wondering about our international students who might be out on field work, um, whether those, they still need to get student blue.
Still pay student fees to the university, I would believe that they do.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
But I can check on that.
Yes, and you said you would be willing to send that memo to us?
Yes.
I would love that, thank you.
Yes, um, actually, my VP of comms should be posting this on social media and then sending it into the next newsletter that's going to come out, um, in two weeks from now.
Fantastic, thank you.
So, next update is Beatty Hill, I don't know if any of you are familiar with Beatty Hill, but it's typically a graduate housing on campus for certain students, mainly international students. Um, the biggest thing here is that it's closing down, um, it's been closing down and it's been stated that it's been closing down since April and if any of you have listened to any of my reports, I have been trying to get a hold on this, and so interesting update with this was at the last Board of Trustees meeting last month, the Vice Chancellor of Finance was stating that it was not going to shut down. There's something called Carolina North that will possibly be happening that will ensure graduate housing in the next 10 years or so, but that's a long time to not have graduate housing on campus, and so Vice Chancellor Finance did say that it would be staying, but the head of housing was stating that it was getting shut down, and so these are conflicting statements, and so in the next two weeks, I do plan to have a meeting with them to try to sort this out and get information for these students that live in these areas. Uh, speaking of Board of Trustees meeting, uh, we did a Board of Trustees meeting last month, the topic was stipends, um, for grad students. We specifically presented on PhD stipends because most master stipends are based on PhD stipends, and so we were asking for an increase and we will send out the link and everything for it, but to summarize, the Board of Trustees did take well to this message. They stated that for us to be competitive, we do have to give competitive stipends, and so they were willing to have an increase. And so the conversation then led to me talking with the dean of the grad school, um, Dean Bethmeyer Davis, and she has stated that she has told the deans of the schools to put in a 2% increase to the minimum stipend, so matching that NIH, um, level stipend, and that's not the stipend we were kind of shooting for. If any of you knew about the stipend increase that was supposed to happen a couple of months ago, it was supposed to be a little bit more than that. So, we think, we were talking with them and interim provost dean, and the issue here was that interim provost dean is interim and not the actual provost. So, the biggest deal is when the new provost comes in, we're going to push for that higher stipend then, but until then, we have this 2% increase to the minimum. Exactly, exactly, um, I know that 200% and this is not acceptable at all, um, which is why when I meet, I'll, I'll jump into the next one, which is Provost Search Committee, um, Provost Search Committee is currently happening, I'm on the committee, we are doing student interviews for this, and so in my student interviews, I will be asking about increasing two livable wages for grad students because, as we all know, our stipends are not livable at all. And so if any of you have any questions that you would like me to ask these, um, provost candidates, since I'm going to be sitting on this panel with them, please send them to me, send them to my email, it's gpsg underscore prez@unc.edu, I'm willing to ask any questions for you guys. And with that, those are my updates.
Great, thank you President Frazier, um, I actually also realized that I did not tell you guys, there's food, it's back there. Please help yourselves, if you guys want to recess for 10, 15 minutes while you guys get food, that is more than fine with me.
Senator Ren Linguistics, I would like to move for a 10-minute recess for food, please.
All right, is there a second? Okay, second, no objections, cool, all right, go get food. Wasn't sure that was going to work, so I'm glad it did, um, yeah, food-wise, please give me feedback if y'all liked something, want more of something, did not like something. Okay, good to know, um, for anyone who doesn't know this about me, I'm Lebanese, I'm very big into Mediterranean food, so I had to include something in there, um, that was Mediterranean. So yeah, for the future, just let me know, uh, what works, what didn't, I will adjust accordingly. We have a pretty good budget for food, especially for the size, so, you know, very flexible. Especially, again, I said this in the email, but if you have dietary restrictions, do let me know, um, yeah. Okay, so then, given that, we will go ahead and move along with the agenda, let me just open that up. All right, so next up, we have a report from, of the Acting Vice President of the Graduate Professional Student Body, Acting Vice President. Please come up, unless, do you want to, you can, you can totally do it from there.
Hear me on here, okay, good afternoon, everybody, um, I am the Acting Vice President of the Graduate and Professionals, um, Student Government. My name is Matthew Zuniga, um, and then I will just dive right into this, uh, just following up on the newsletter that Leah previously mentioned. It is bi-weekly, it's coming out every other Monday, which would be, um, the first and the third Monday of every month. The first one went out yesterday, but we have got word that some people did not receive it, so we are currently working on that. If you would like to, um, put something on the newsletter, visit our Get In Touch page on our, uh, GPSG website, and the deadline for, um, the information being put on the following newsletter is the, uh, Friday before. So, um, for the first Monday newsletter would be the last, you know, Friday of the previous month, and then the second Friday for the, um, the third Monday of the, the week. Um, I also want to, um, kind of report on the future of GPSG Committee. It's a committee that meets every five years, um, and we need to, you know, just kind of assess, uh, assess where we're going, uh, and like the, like the name suggests, just talking about the future of GPSG. We will need five senators and five non-senators, um, and we'll be looking for that for next meeting, so please have that on your radar. And then similarly to the, to the newsletter, if you would like anything posted on our social media, just, uh, please visit that Get In Touch page on our website. There is a request form on there, um, and so just fill that out and it'll reach us that way. Then I also want to touch on really quick, um, our Director of Community Engagement, uh, Josh, he is spearheading Thanksgiving, um, at Carolina, which is pretty much just a, like a get-together. Fees for students, uh, staying in Chapel Hill over Thanksgiving break, um, at the Carolina Club, and it's complimentary, it's free. Yeah, that will be on the day, which is, um, November 27th, that Thursday, um, there are three separate sitting, uh, seating times, which is 11:00 AM, 12:30 PM, or 2:00 PM. It is RSVP by RSVP, and plus ones are welcome, um, if you have any more questions about that, um, email Josh, his email is jbrem@unc.edu. And then if you would like to get into contact with me, my email is zuin@unc.edu, and my office hours are, uh, Wednesdays from 11:30 to 12:30, thank you.
All right, thanks for that, Acting Vice President, uh, Acting Treasurer, your report is next.
Hey, everyone, hope you are, can you hear me? I hope you are doing well, I'm Reza DeRudian, Acting, uh, Vice President of, uh, Finance, which changed recently to Treasurer, so I'm, yeah, let's say Treasurer, it's shorter, it's better. The update that I have is, uh, like, uh, we have helped the university, the tuition fee committee and, uh, student fee committees through the, with the university officials and through the, we had, we had to audit some fees and everything. And, uh, I think the university has a, has an intention to increase the, uh, graduate tuition, like, for, uh, through the, um, upcoming years, but it hasn't been, uh, yet confirmed, which the session, like, with the meeting, uh, with, which will be happening tomorrow from 9:30 to probably 12, it will be finalized and probably for our next meeting, I have the finalized update about that. And, uh, that's my part, and, uh, today I will be speaking in, like, uh, for the Director of the Academic Affairs, Neil Sharma, because he had, uh, like, an ongoing focus on the, uh, like, the student, graduate students, uh, intake on the AI and how the gen AI would affect their works, and like, uh, he, with the help of, like, Dev Gandhi, who is the, uh, Director of the Data Collection and Assessment, uh, which their report, uh, I will share it with you later after this session, uh, but the report mostly consists of, like, uh, almost, uh, like, every student is, uh, using AI, but like, the, uh, the majority of our students are using generative AI, at least, uh, more than seven times a month, and which is, uh, like, uh, a huge use for the university, which, uh, there is, like, the feeling that there is, is a vacuum in the guidelines that we as, uh, P, or, let's say, the graduate students need to be, uh, we need there to be a guideline for us to be using generative AI, and, uh, like, almost, I think, 60% of the students are, uh, afraid of being judged by their peers or the, let's say, professors for using AI, because, uh, like, again, there is no, like, uh, proper guideline by the university. So, I think the main goal of this, uh, like, study, which, uh, the later results, because there were 3,000 response by the graduate students, uh, which, uh, later results will, uh, come out soon, uh, focuses on, like, the, we are requesting a guideline from, um, the university officials, and, uh, Neil will be in charge of that matter. And that's where, uh, my updates for today, and thank you.
All right, thank you Acting Treasurer, and lastly, Acting Chief of Staff of the Graduate Professional Student Body, recognized.
Thank you, is it working?
Yes.
Okay, cool, uh, my name is Jayden Smith, I'm a first-year master's of public health student, um, in applied epidemiology, and I'm the Acting Chief of Staff of the Executive Branch. My office hours are held every Wednesday from 2:00 to 3:00, that's in-person, you can walk in or make an appointment with me, it's like via Microsoft Teams, so just email me if you want to have a Teams meeting with that. President Frazier's office hours, she's in the office all Wednesday, so if you ever need her, you can email her, do Teams, or just walk in on Wednesdays. It's in the Frank Portigram Student Union, Suite 3109, my office is B, or is this D? Yes, um, mainly what I do is external appointments, um, those applications are open and students are appointed on a rolling basis. And you can apply for them through the GPSG website, well, the Heal Life page, you go to the Heal Life forum, type in GPSG, go to forums, and then it's like an external appointments application, um, you apply for it there, and that's just positions where graduate professional students can sit on university-wide committees, um, and, you know, provide support or help or make change on a graduate level. At this time, I'm prioritizing appointments to committees that, like, the DGSSs have reached out to kind of say that we need someone ASAP and urgently, and I hope I can lean on you guys to kind of fill those slots, um, so that we can make sure we're having as much representation as possible and the graduate student seat isn't going unnoticed or unrepresented. So, some of them include the Carolina Dining Services Board of Director, the Administrative Board of the Library Building and Grounds Committee, uh, the Carolina Center for Public Service Advisory Board, and then another one is the Graduate Advisory Committee to the Provost. So, that's a full committee that we have right now, and it's oversaw, um, by Aaron Kula Wright, who's our Vice President of Advocacy and Governmental Affairs, but the attendance has been pretty low for everyone appointed to the committee, so we don't want to waste those positions. So, we're taking like three more people additionally, um, so yeah, if you're interested in that, let's go ahead and apply for that. And then our Acting Director of State and Federal Relations, Anna Friedman, um, she's seeking appointees with experience in policy review, policy research, and policy creation to assist with, like, legislative tracking and analysis. So, interested students are encouraged to apply through the same external appointment forum that I talked about earlier, um, and this is the Graduate Student Policy Advisory Committee. And next is events that we have coming up, we have one this Thursday, the AI and Graduate Student Experience Panel, it's a panel that me and Matt are sitting on, oh, and Carmen, hate that, um, a couple of us are sitting on that, it's at the top of New West on Thursday at? 3:00, so we'll see you there with that one, and then we also have the Fall Festival coming up, that's on Tuesday, November the 4th, at 11:00 AM, um, and that's outside of the Student Union. So, we asked that you promote both of these events to your constituents, I know the Thursday one has a, like, short turnaround time, but both of the flyers have been posted to our Instagram, so if you guys want to check those out, that's great. And then if you want to know specifically what we're doing a little bit more in depth, you guys will get access to the monthly reports that we submitted to the Heal Life forum. All of our monthly reports, um, are due the Wednesday prior to the subsequent Senate meetings, so they will be there for review, and it's kind of like more details of what I just shared, and that's it. Oh, and if you have anything for me, my email is gpsg underscore chief cos@unc.edu, that's it.
All right, thank you Acting Chief of Staff, um, to be, to clarify, when they say Heal Life, the executives, it's a separate Heal Life than what the Senate is, so the one that you were added in, like, several days ago to yesterday, um, is not the same Heal Life where they will take the applications, if there's any confusion, just reach out to any one of us and we'll direct you. All right, moving forward, there is the receipts of petitions and messages, papers addressed to the Senate, I have no papers addressed to the Senate. This is something new that I added, which is borrowed from the undergrads, the three-minute speeches that any senator at this time can, uh, give a three-minute speech if they would like, is there anyone who would like to do that? Right, going twice, all right, cool, all right, we will now move into public comment, is there any member of the public who wishes to speak? Okay, seeing?
I would like to speak.
All right, um, please state your name for the record, and you may go ahead, you, uh, is there, would we like to limit, establish a time limit?
I motion to set up a three-minute time limit.
Okay, do you have a second? Any objections? Oh, yeah, Senator Beck motioned, who second, Rumpani? I'll give it to Rumpani, Senator Beck motioned for limiting to three minutes, Rumpani seconded, no objections, all right, you may begin, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name's Avery Baker, I'm a UNC alum and former senator, I'm just speaking because, um, in the beginning of September, whoever was running the GPSG Instagram blocked me, and I'm not sure why, but since this is a public body, I'm pretty sure that's a First Amendment violation, and I would like to be unblocked, thank you.
Okay, thank you for that, Senator Baker, um, don't know who would have done that, but, um, okay, so then, are there any other members of the public who wish to speak? Seeing none, all right, we will now move to the review of the standing rules. I sent out this, the standing rules that I am proposing, they are, I will emphasize, proposed standing rules, which means that you guys do not have to accept them. Now, we do have our old standing rules, which are in Appendix E, I believe, of the GPSG code. The reason I'm proposing new ones is because those ones are rather outdated, um, and they aren't not very clear about many things. So, it is really up to you guys, you can motion to adopt the rules that I proposed, you can motion to adopt the old rules, you can open debate on which ones, uh, we should do, up to y'all. Senator Ren.
Senator Ren Linguistics, would you be able to give a summary of what the changes are for people who might not be familiar with our old standing rules or?
Yes, so, um, in terms of a summary, probably not, um, because there's a lot that's different, but I can give you kind of a brief overview of what they contain. Let me just go into there, and normally I would not preside over something that I am proposing, but we just don't have anyone else to preside right now, which will hopefully be, uh, fixed by the end of this meeting. Okay, um, probably should have pulled it up, so, really, a lot of it, um, establishes, like, how the first meeting is called, who needs to be there, who calls it, where it's going to be ta, done, so it's the first Tuesday of September at 5:30 PM. And the locate, it says the location needs to be determined 48 hours before, uh, if the Speaker, AKA whoever's in my position, is there, they will administer the meeting, if not, the Vice President will administer the meeting, and then it will, there's an order of succession from there. It says regular meetings of the Senate shall take place on the first Tuesday of each month from September until April. Thirty, to call an emergency or special meeting, the Speaker can, or 30% of the senators can petition to call it. Virtual and hybrid meetings, all standing meetings have to be at least hybrid, no fully virtual standing meetings. Special meetings and meetings that are after April before September can be entirely virtual if they need to be. Quorum, that's defined in the law, but just a simply, a simple majority of the senators that are in office and empowered to vote, we don't have any provisions in the law to disempower anyone to vote, so pretty much it's just the majority of all senators. The journal is required by the Constitution, that's just basically our minutes, they go into a journal, they are kept in a book. Two-thirds majority of you guys to alter an agenda that's been adopted, that's pretty standard. Two-thirds majority of you guys to alter an agenda that's been adopted. That's pretty standard. Special meetings have agenda and that agenda cannot be changed. And then it just establishes the agenda for this meeting. The oath of office is just every meeting, I will ask if there's anyone who needs to be sworn in and we'll swear them in. Approval of the minutes, we just do that every meeting for the minutes from the last meeting. So whoever is going, when we have the minutes for this meeting, next meeting, we will review them. I will either send them out within twenty, twenty-four hours beforehand or read them out loud. Papers and petitions, this is for people who want to submit any sort of message to the Senate, uh, not, not speaking in public comment, but submit a written message that will be read out loud. Um, the three-minute speeches is what I just described. There's rules that uh allow people to speak for three minutes in public comment like we just did today. And, or no, sorry, five minutes. And then that can be extended by a two-thirds majority of the Senate. We do a review of standing rules at the first meeting every year. That's, I think, already in the current rules. We added a docket item called special orders. So that's anything that the Senate has to automatically do goes into special orders. So if you have to fill vacancies, confirm someone, that goes into special orders. There's stuff about legislation, but that's mostly in the law. Sponsor's in the story is also in the law. Introduction of legislation, it has to be introduced by a senator. Uh, if someone who's not a senator wants to write a bill, they need to get a senator to sponsor it. And that senator is going to be the chief person talking about it on the floor, defending it to the Senate. Clerical stuff about numbering legislation, the formatting of legislation, that's not really, I will help everyone with that. Rule that I have to give you legislation twenty-four hours before the Senate, that was never a rule before. Now that is a thing. Talks about how we can establish select committees, which there wasn't a rule for that before. How we can refer stuff to committees. How we can suspend rules. And then virtual meeting provisions. Um, virtual meeting provisions, I'm, you know, going to ignore them for now. But it just requires that senators who are going to attend virtually, if we decide that we are going to allow that for standing meetings, should have their camera on. Speak through the mic, not the chat, and that the chat will be disabled for that meeting. That's pretty much it. Senator Beck?
Senator Beck from Pathology, um, I have a question about the rule number eleven agenda of a regular meeting, specifically number E, the reports from officers of the Senate. I see that both the Chair of Travel Awards and Chair of Student Organizational Awards were not included on those. Is there a reason why?
Nope, no reason. I can add them if I would consider that friendly.
Thank you.
Do you have any specific order of success? I should probably share this. So let me just, we're gonna stop share and reshare my screen. Okay.
I do not have a specific order, but I also don't know if you want to include that select committee for whatever.
I would not put them on a report from officials. Okay, so I'm gonna have you go after SOGAPs and then Travel Awards after you. I lose the ability to type uh when I'm doing it in front of people. Actually, fun fact about me, I type fast enough to be a professional typist, but obviously not in this scenario. Okay. And would anyone else have any questions or would like to provide amendments? Yes.
Senator Chapman from Physics and Astronomy. Um, I just wanted to ask, clarifying what, what's meant by public when public comment. Whether it's literally anybody, it seems to me that it could make sense to restrict that graduate students or people who are actively associated with the university or something like that.
So unfortunately, when we meet, we are actually an entity of the university. So we are part of the university's five oh one C three. So we are actually a public body under the North Carolina general statutes. We have to have a public comment and we cannot restrict who can speak in it. It is not illegal under, not just illegal under student government law, it is illegal under North Carolina law for us to restrict that. Any other questions? Okay. Any amendments? Or would someone like to move to adopt the rules?
I move, so moved?
Sure. Is there a second? All right. Um, so Senator Beck moved to adopt the rules. Senator Ren seconded. Any objections? All right, cool. Rules are adopted. Then, I have so many windows. All right, so that ends that. We have no old business and so we can actually move into. Actually, hold on. I realized I hadn't, did not do something in the agenda. I'm a mess. I'm sorry, guys. So I was going to give the Senate a presentation on the student government and Roberts rules of order, the like, the Senate, how it all works. Do you guys want to have that presentation? Or would you rather me send you the slides? Send you the slides? Okay. It's not very descriptive, so I will let you know that it's mainly just icons. I did not practice, but I, you know, I very much wing presentations. I've never practiced a presentation in my life since. It does not work for me to practice. I mean, I will practice to, you know, for timing purposes, but it does, yeah. Still, we want to see this, we'll just send you the slides. Okay. Hmm? You, you can, yeah.
Can we do it in five minutes?
Sure. Is that, do you want to recess for five minutes? Oh, can I present it in five minutes? No, it's like a, it's like an hour-long presentation. Okay, I will record something for y'all and I will send it to you and then you guys can view it on your own time. I do really want y'all to uh learn about the student government. There are particularities about the UNC student government. Can I have actually five minutes to give you a brief overview? Cool. No objections? Great. Let me just share the screen and then we will do that and I will speedrun this. There we go. All right. So student government at UNC. I'm not gonna tell you the purpose. You probably know the purpose. You probably believe in the purpose. You are here. So we have three governing documents, the Constitution, the GPSG code, which is our laws, and the Joint Code. So GPSG code, those are the laws that we establish. The Constitution um is split into three chapters. Chapter one is laws for all students. Chapter two is laws for undergrads. Chapter three is laws for graduate and professional students. Um, the Joint Code is weird. It's the laws that are established for both grads and undergrads that don't go in the Constitution. Mainly things like the Joint Governance Council, which I will explain what that is. And like joint committees that both undergrads and grads serve on. There are three branches within each of the undergrad and graduate student government, the executive, the legislative and the judicial. Executive is mostly right there. Uh, we are the legislative and then the judicial branch of GPSG is pretty much non-existent at this point. With the exception of there is the Student Supreme Court, that is not just a branch of the GPSG, however, that is the overall court. That is the overall judicial branch of both the undergrads and graduate uh student governments. And yes, we do have a Student Supreme Court, for those of you who did not know. There are joint bodies. So there's the, as I mentioned, the Student Supreme Court, but the Joint Governance Council, uh, four representatives from each constituency. We will be electing people to the Joint Governance Council today. And that's things when either of the Senates pass a law that it would affect the other constituency. So if we pass a law that would affect the undergrads, it would have to go through the Joint Governance Council and it would have to pass the Joint Governance Council for it to go into effect. The Senate, uh, your responsibilities, attend and participate in all meetings. Try. If you can't be here, it's understandable, but try to be here for most of the meetings. Um, and let me know if you won't. Because if a lot of people aren't gonna be here and we don't make quorum, I would very much rather cancel the meeting than come here, get the food and find out that we can't meet. Represent your constituents and gather their feedback, propose and vote on legislation. You probably know this. Committees and task forces. We have exactly the number of senators pretty much for the number of seats on committees. So everyone's gonna have to do something this year. Sorry to, sorry to say that. Or maybe not sorry, maybe you guys want to serve on committees. Um, you will have to hold an annual town hall. We will be discussing that and extensions for that because I think that would normally have to happen by literally the end of this month. Given though that we did not meet in September, that's, I, that's not gonna happen. Keep your constituency informed about Senate and student government elections and referenda and events. Be professional. These are the committees. I'll actually just go over them when we elect people to them, or I'll just put them up. Parliamentary procedure and Roberts rules. This is Roberts rules. It is very big, it's very hefty, but I will refer to it whenever there is any sort of point of order, issue, confusion, et cetera, or something that our rules do not cover. All of the motions that you make are here. But a brief overview, we've been doing this so far, but a motion is a formal proposal to take an action. A second is someone else is agreeing with that motion. Amendment is you want to change the motion. By the way, bills, rules, anything that's proposed, like a bill is a motion, technically speaking. Motions can be also written or verbal. Quorum is the minimum number of people who have to be here for us to actually meet. That is a simple majority of all of you is what that number is. I believe that's sixteen. And then the Chair is the person presiding over the meeting. In this scenario, it's me. If I nominate someone else to preside over this meeting, then they are the Chair. There are specific points that you might want to bring up. There's a point of personal privilege. So this is, you can't hear me. You, someone is being loud next to you and you can't hear what's going on and you're not able to participate. That's what that is. It has the highest precedence because we want to make sure that everyone can equally participate. Point of order is if you believe we're violating the rules. Point of parliamentary inquiry is you want to ask a question about what the correct procedures are. Um, and the point of information is you want a clarification or fact. To make a motion, you say motion to or I move that. Do not say I motion to. That is, that is not a thing. Debate rules, speak only when recognized, uh, address the Chair, not other people. Uh, and stay on topic. We can vote through voice vote, show of hands, ballot voting, which is Heal Life, or a roll call. For controversial votes. Quickly, uh, be confident. Just don't be afraid to make motions and second them. Ask questions if you're unsure. I will help you if, and I am no expert on Roberts rules, so like I will probably pull this out and open it a lot. So like, just please ask questions. Respect me and whoever is presiding over the meeting while they are presiding and honestly, just respect everyone that's in here. Focus on the issue, not the person. So no personal attacks. Talk about the topic at hand. Don't attack the person who's presenting anything. And speak once per motion until everyone else has had the chance to speak. So once you've spoken, I'm gonna give everyone else a chance to speak and then I will come back to you if you still want to speak. That's pretty much it. Okay. All right. So now we go into special orders and we are gonna start electing people for positions and I'm actually really happy because we're making very good time. So the first thing, and let me just share actually the agenda because we might as well. Yep. No, do not look at my calendar. Okay, there we go. All right. So the first thing to do is to elect the President Pro Tempore. Um, the President Pro Tempore is basically the Vice Speaker. They will preside over the meeting at any time that I can't. If I'm out, if I'm sick, if I'm gone. If I am presenting a bill to the Senate that is my bill, I should not be presiding over the time of which that bill is being debated, so they will preside over that. Again, everyone has to do something. So seeing that, would anyone like to nominate someone or themselves to be President Pro Tempore? I can't do this for President Pro Tempore, but I can do it for committees. If people don't nominate themselves, I do have the power to just assign you to a committee. I'm just letting you, President Pro Tempore, I can't assign it to anyone, but, so if you don't want to be on a committee, now's your chance. Would you? Yeah.
Can you maybe go over the duties of the various committees and the President Pro Tempor? As we're thinking about, you know, we're gonna want to be on one of these at least.
Yeah. Um, so I will actually reshare and pull up the different committees. Is that okay with everyone? Is there an objection to me going through the committees? Okay. I promise it will be less of a mess uh for future Senate meetings. All right. So there are six standing committees. Finance, let me just present here, hold on. Okay, cool. So there are six standing committees. We actually also have one select committee, but we're gonna talk about that in a moment. So Finance Committee, Rules and Judiciary, Oversight and Accountability, SOGAP, State of the Graduate Professional Students, Travel Awards and Student Organization Awards Committee. Sorry, I forgot that. It's a terrible name. I wonder who proposed that. No, I'm kidding. I'm totally messing. I, for those of you who don't know, I proposed that name, or I at least pushed them to change their name. Finance Committee, this is where I came from. I was Chair for half the year last year and was a member for the full year. Finance Committee does a lot. And it's a very important committee. You will establish the yearly budget and financial policies. This year, the undergraduates want to hold a constitutional referendum to change how fees are allocated. So you will be in charge of reviewing that before it comes to the full Senate. Anything appropriation, so I'll come back to this later, but they review funding requests essentially that Student Organization Awards and Travel Awards don't have jurisdiction over. Recommends impeachment of financial officers for non-feasance, misfeasance or malfeasance. Hopefully it does not ever come to that. For anyone who doesn't know, non-feasance is like you're not doing your job. Misfeasance is you did your job improperly and malfeasance is that you intentionally did something wrong and abused the position that you are in. You settle financial disputes regarding financial laws. You're like a mini court finance committee in that sense. You oversee the Emergency Fund and the Emergency Fund Selection Committee, which is what EFSC stands for, and you handle appeals of the Emergency Fund. You review edits to Title Nine of the GPSG code. And that is the title of all the financial provisions. It is not the same as Title Nine of like the federal statutes. Ex officio, the treasurer sits on there. He is non-voting, but he is required to be at your meetings. I will likely also try to be at your meetings, Finance Committee, because I was on Finance last year and I recognize that a lot of people are new, so I can, you know, be there and kind of explain things and help guide. Rules and judiciary. So this doesn't look like a lot. It is a lot because pretty much every bill that's not an appropriation, Travel Awards or anything financial, goes through rules and judiciary. So you pretty much review the legislation that changes governing documents. Um, and then you also conduct an annual code review, formatting, et cetera. I will assist with the annual code review as well. Vice President sits ex officio on this meeting, again, non-voting. So does the Solicitor General, but we don't have Solicitor, Solicitor, Solicitor General right now. Oversight and accountability. Um, so your job mainly will be to interview presidential appointees that require Senate confirmation, uh, and you provide the positive or negative recommendation to the Senate. You request information and reports from the officers of the GPSG and you call them in for questioning. That is also a right that the full Senate has. So I don't want you to think that only OANIA can do that. If you ever want to question someone and have someone testify before you, you are allowed to do that. You provide reports of investigations. You recommend impeachment or recall for, again, non-feasance, misfeasance or malfeasance of presidential appointees. You're supposed to conduct two meetings per year with the executive branch to discuss accountability and transparency measures. And ex officio on this committee is the president pro tempore, whoever's elected to that, and the chief of staff. State of Graduate and Professional Students Committee. So this is the general outreach and advocacy efforts of the Senate. As well as resolutions that express the opinions of the Senate will go through this committee. So you will review all proposed resolutions, you'll get input from graduate and professional students on current issues. You are supposed to coordinate at least one public forum per semester for the purpose of allowing graduate and professional students to share matters of importance. I don't think that happened last year and I did not even know that was a thing. Administer the approval of town hall requirements. So again, like I said, you're technically required to do a town hall. Where you kind of invite your constituents, bring them in, talk to them about what's going on with the Senate. That is required of all senators. Again. We'll have to figure out how to extend that. And then the vice president and vice president for advocacy sit ex officio on that committee. Student Organization Award Committee. So it was previously called the Appropriations Committee. And this is generally very common in most student governments. It is the committee that reviews applications for funding from districts, student organizations. They wanna do events, they want to have initiatives, it's, they wanna invite a speaker to come in, get food, all that fun stuff. That would go through that committee. Finally, travel awards. They administer the GPSG travel awards program. Review changes to Title VIII of the code, or sorry, and ex officio on this, sorry, on Student Organization Awards is Vice President for Communications. Back to travel awards. You administer the travel awards program and review changes to Title VIII of the code. Ex officio is treasurer on this. Yeah. I will also note, I did say that RNJ does review all matters of legislation. Pretty much, mostly, not really. Travel awards and finance have jurisdiction over Title VIII and IX respectively. So if it's a financial provision change, that goes through finance. If it's a travel awards change, it goes through travel awards. Everything else, RNJ. Yes.
Senator Beck from Pathology, I would like to provide a point of information as well for a lot of the new senators here. Participation on these committees actually comes with a stipend. Each committee also has a chair that comes with an additional stipend. Those chairs do have a little bit more work and additional meetings. Each of these committees meet at least, at minimum, once a month. From anywhere from one to two hours each meeting. If not more, depending on the amount of legislation we have, and. Yeah.
And I'll also give a point of information. You can also, the committees, you can meet as frequently or as infrequently as you want. If you'd rather have four one-hour-long meetings a month instead of one four-hour-long meeting a month, you are totally free to do that. The one thing is for the purposes of public meetings. And I will tell all the committee chairs this, once you're established, but you will have to kind of establish a schedule of meetings and tell me what that schedule is so that I can publicly post it. So that members of the public can come to your meetings. Your meetings are also public meetings, so you will also have to have a public, a common period. And I will give you all a template agenda that you can use that will have all the important items that you need on there. Does that answer your question? Cool. Any other questions before we move into elections?
Senator Slatter, economics. Are there any dispositions about conflict of interest? So for example, if I sit into the student organizational award committee, can I be member of the organization beneficial in award?
So there isn't really an, like, an issue with you sitting on two committees. The only thing I will say is I am going to try to ensure that everyone is on a, like, the maximum seats on a committee are filled before anyone doubles up. The one thing is you cannot double up on the stipend. So like if you are chair and committee member, you have to choose one of the stipends and collect that. You can't collect two stipends.
Maybe because of my inflected English, but, no, it was another question. Say I am member, for example, of an organization that is a beneficiary of an award, can I sit on this committee?
Yes, you can sit on the committee. You just have to recuse yourself from any votes that pertain to that organization. So if you sit on like the, someone give me an organization. The GS, oh yes, the GSA. So if you are the president of the GSA and you applied for money and you also sit on the appropriations committee, you have to recuse yourself and not vote on that. Go ahead.
Samantha Beck, pathology, point of information, again. Same with travel awards. You, I don't think there's anything saying you can't apply for travel awards, but I'm not entirely sure about that one. But also, if for some reason, the travel awards are also anonymized. And if you, for whatever, based on the application, realize who it is, or realize that they are a part of your department, you can al, you should also recuse yourself.
Okay, any more questions? Okay, now, I will take nominations of yourself or another person to be president pro tempore. Don't be shy, someone. I will help you. I, like, I will, you know. I won't hang you out to dry, but one of you has to do it. We're not leaving until we have a president pro tempore. Oh, yes, sorry, I did not see your hand. Okay. Go ahead.
I'll do it.
Okay, can you state? Can you state your name and district for the record?
Pascal, Romance Studies.
Alright, Senator Pascal has nominated. Also, let me know your pronouns, so.
Them.
Okay, they, they have nominated themselves for president pro tempore. Is there a second to that nomination?
Senator Mersman from Pathology, I'll second that.
Alright, awesome. Are there any objections to Senator Pascal being president pro tempore? Right, seeing none. Congratulations, you are now president pro tempore, Pascal. Alright, so now we will move and I will again unshare and reshare so that everyone can see what's going on. Okay, we will now move to the election of the members of the Rules and Judiciary Committee. Alright, I will now take nominations to the Rules and Judiciary. I will remind you, if, you know, if no one nominates themselves, I'm just gonna assign all of you. So. Yes, five seats on the committee, including the chair. Senator Freeman?
Senator Freeman, Public Policy. I move to nominate myself.
Alright, is there a second? Cool, any objections? Alright, congratulations, you are now on the Rules and Judiciary Committee. If we, we can, I, I'm gonna ask, can we just save the clapping until after we end each committee, cuz we're gonna end up clapping like 20 times, or actually 30 times, so. Your hands will be very sore. Okay, I need four more people for that committee, so you might as well just, let's.
Senator Ramponi, Physician Assistant Studies. I'll move to nominate myself.
Alright, Senator Ramponi, to Rules and Judiciary, do I have a second? Alright, Senator Wren, seconded. Any objections? Alright, perhaps you can send her around, honey. Okay, three more people. You guys have 30 seconds before I start literally walking around and picking you out. Alright, well, I have to get a motion from y'all to do that, so do you wanna do that?
Senator Beck from Pathology, motions to move to the next committee.
Okay. Any objections? Are we sure? Okay. Alright, so we are moving on to SOGAPs. Remember, SOGAPs is basically all the resolutions and opinions of the Senate plus the town halls. I'll now take nominations to the SOGAPs Committee.
Senator Mersman from Pathology, I move to nominate Senator Clark for Pathology for that committee.
Okay. I'm going to assume that Senator Clark is gonna accept that nomination. Is there a second to that? Cool. Assuming no objections from anyone, including Senator Clark, he is now on the committee.
I promise I've been texting him to get to that first.
That makes me feel a little bit better. Okay. How about this? Can, can, do, do we just wanna go through each of you and you can say what committee you wanna be on? Okay, okay, Senator Ramponi.
Senator Ramponi, Physician Assistant Studies. I make a move to suspend the rules to finish the election process a little more expeditiously.
Okay, so, is there a second? Okay, seeing that you haven't defined exactly what to do, I'm gonna take it as my role to say, I am literally just gonna like go through all of you. I can go, you can raise your hand. Actually, I'm just gonna go through, you know, the, the, the thing and we're just gonna nominate everyone. So Jackson Clark was already nominated to SOGAPs. Okay, maybe this is not very expeditious. Alright, Senator Mersman, what committee would you like to be on?
To nominate myself for Senate Finance Committee.
Alright, Senate Finance, good choice. Second to that? We're not gonna second. You know what, as, as, if you object to anyone being on a committee, just yell that, but I hope that you won't. Omar Moreby, I cannot be on a committee, so we're gonna move forward. Senator Wang.
Senator Wang from Bio statistics. I'd like nominate myself to the Senate Travel Awards Committee.
Alright. Moving down. Alright. Senator Ward is not here. Senator Hook was not here, right? There's no Senator Hook, okay. So we're gonna skip them. Alright, Senator Lee.
Senator Bourne Lee, to, I move to nominate myself to Senate Finance Committee.
Alright, Senator Lee is nominated to Finance. Senator Slatter. What committee would you like to be on? Alright. Alright, Senator Henry.
Senator Henry from Geology, I'll do Senate Travel Awards.
Alright, STA. I'm gonna have to double check that we have the correct numbers on each one. I'll do that after this meeting. Senator Foster.
Senator Foster from Health Policy, I move to nominate myself to the SOGAPs Committee.
Senator Mangla.
Senator Mangla, School of Law, motion to be nominated to the Oversight and Accountability Committee.
Alright, ONA. Senator Wren. Senator Wren is only gonna be here for like a month, so we're gonna skip Senator Wren for now. Senator Ramirez.
I move to nominate myself for Student Organization Awards Committee.
Senator Spezial. Is that correct, how I'm pronouncing it?
Almost, it's Speciale.
Speciale, okay, thank you.
Senator Speciale from Marine Sciences, I nominate myself to go on the Travel Awards Committee.
Okay. I think we might be full on travel awards. We'll have to double check. Not, someone, thank you for counting. I appreciate that. Alright, Senator Filner.
Can I also nominate myself for Travel Awards?
Sure. That's four, right? Okay. Senator Homeyer?
Senator Homeyer from Math, I nominate myself to the Student Organization Awards Committee.
Okay, Senator Nigel, y'all have to remind me how to pronounce your name, I'm sorry.
It's okay, it's Senator Nagel Frazel from Musicology. I move to nominate myself to the State of Graduate and Professional Students Committee.
And Senator Beck, you're keeping track of all of these? Okay, cool, cool, cool. Thank you. Senator Burson.
Senator Burson from Musicology, I move to nominate myself for the Student Organization Awards Committee.
Alright, Senator Beck.
Hi, Beck from Pathology, I would like to do Student Organization Awards again, thank you.
Right. Senator Shore.
From Pharmacy, and I will do Travel Awards Committee.
Okay. Senator Beck, is that, is that five?
Again, just because they've hit five, you can still nominate yourself if you really, really wanna do it and we can go through a voting process.
Yes. Senator Thompson.
Senator Thompson, also from Pharmacy, I'd like to nominate myself for SOGAP.
Alright, SOGAPs. I think that's five on SOGAPs. Four, okay. Senator Dominiac.
Okay, Oversight and Accountability Committee.
You guys are not interested in finance? Come on. Poor people who were not here, cuz they're just gonna get put on finance. Senator Ramponi, you nominated already to, what was it? RNJ, cool. Senator Chapman.
Senator Chapman from Physics and Astronomy, I'll do the Finance Committee.
Alright. Senator Davis.
Government, curious which committees still have spots available?
RNJ has two, SOGAP, so I'm gonna list how many people have already named them, nominated themselves. So RNJ has two, SOGAPs has four, Finance has three, SOA has five, Travel Awards five, and ONA two.
As a reminder, we need five on each one.
Senator Davis, School of Government, Finance.
Finance, cool. Senator Champion.
Senator Champion, Finance.
Finance, cool. You have an awesome last name, I'm just saying. Senator Gilland?
Senator Gilland, I nominate myself for the Graduate and Professional Students Committee.
SOGAPs, so that's the fifth person on SOGAPs, yes, okay. So if anyone else wants to be on SOGAPs, you can, we just have to vote. Senator Holloway.
Senator Holloway from Leadership, I'd like to be on Oversight and Accountability.
Oversight and Accountability. Okay, Senator Freeman.
Rules, is that what I was? Yeah.
Oh, right, yeah, cool. Senator Bootshard. Oh, wait, no, you're president pro tempore. You don't need to be on a committee, never mind. Senator Conley is not here. That's everyone. What's, what are the final numbers?
Rules and Judiciary has three, SOGAPs has five, Finance five, Student Organization Awards five, Travel Awards five, and ONA three, and I think that's as good as we've ever done on round one.
Awesome. Okay, now we can all clap for everyone who, oh. Alright, Senator Ramponi.
Senator Ramponi, just wanted to move to end the suspension of the standing rules.
Alright, Senator Ramponi, seconded. Any objections? Cool. If you ever don't hear a motion, also, you can ask me to re- If you ever don't hear a motion, also, you can ask me to repeat it. I will. All right, so now we are the Select Committee on the Code of Permanent Laws. We establish this is a temporary committee for this year only. It's supposed to review changes to the Joint Code. I will let you know that the undergraduate speaker has expressed that he would actually like to have the undergraduate speaker and the undergraduate Rules and Judiciary Chair to, and along with their graduate counterparts, so me and whoever the Rules and Judiciary Chair is, to sit on an informal committee to go through all these changes and do that instead of going back and forth through committee. Now, this committee is established, so we would have to disestablish it if we'd want to get rid of it. We can't really do that in this meeting, because we have to have a resolution for it, but we can skip appointing people to it if we want to go with that process. Or if people would rather have a select committee in the Senate, which means that people will have to double up on committees, that is also fine. I leave that up to you guys.
Senator Mersman from Anthropology, can you describe a little bit more about these, uh, the Select Committee on the Code of Permanent Laws, on what the responsibilities of that committee are?
Yes, so you will be responsible. So I mentioned the Joint Code. The Joint Code is all of the laws that govern both the graduates and undergraduates. It has to mainly do with the Joint Governance Council, which is again, the body that approves bills that are related to both, uh, the, both the undergraduates and the graduates. So the, we changed the Constitution two months, our portion of the Constitution two months ago. However, the Constitution itself, the entire document changed like two years ago, and like entirely. And that means that the old Joint Code fell out of line with what is now the current Constitution. In fact, it's no longer even named the Joint Code, it's the Code of Permanent Laws. I don't know who came up with that name, I don't like it. So basically, you would be rewriting all of the Joint Code laws. It's a lot of just, uh, most of those laws are literally like, the Speaker and the President Pro tempore of the Graduate Senate will serve on this committee, and then they will appoint so many people from each Senate, et cetera, et cetera. It's not a lot of laws, it's mostly just who's, does what. Uh, in joint committees is mainly what it is. That would be, those would be the responsibilities. So there is kind of, the undergrads already wrote their proposal for it, so you'd have a template to work off of, and you kind of edit and approve and change it from there. Um, and then by the end of the year, you guys, that committee will put forward a bill that they will pass to Joint Governance, to change the Joint Code.
Point of information, end of the calendar year or academic year?
End of, sorry, end of our legislative session, actually, or, and before we recess, so April. Before the April meeting, you will have that done. So it is a bit of a time crunch, because we are one month behind. I am more than happy to sit on the, on an informal committee with the undergraduate speaker and hammer this out. I don't have any objections, you can make me do it, but I also want to give people the opportunity to serve on this committee if they would like.
Senator Beck from Pathology, I move to, um, is this strike or postpone or table, that's the word.
There you go.
Um, I motion to table election of the, uh, Select Committee until we decide this.
And, yeah, do you want to say indefinitely? Okay, uh, there's been a motion to table indefinitely, is there a second? All right, any objection, any objections? No, okay, so we basically killed that committee. I'll write a resolution to get rid of it. So that means RNJ Chair, you will be sitting with me and the undergraduate speaker and RNJ Chair to rewrite the laws. All right, now the fun part. Election of Graduate and Professional Student Representatives to the Joint Governance Council. I've, this, like, I've said it twice already, but do we need a refresher on what the Joint Governance Council does? Cool. President Pro tempore, uh, you act, yes. Yes, thank you. It meets, the Joint Governance Council meets every two weeks on Wednesday. The next meeting is next Wednesday, and it, and it's at 5:30 PM. It is in-person only. Now, the nice thing about the Joint Governance Council is you are allowed to appoint proxies, so if you can't be there, you can have someone else be there in your stead. I will say, if you're going to do that, make sure you're appointing someone you trust, because they will vote for you, and if you don't like how they voted, tough luck. So make sure that if you do that, it's someone that you trust to do that. And it can be anyone, it doesn't have to be someone from the Senate or the executive. It could literally be like your significant other, your friend, your best friend, whoever you want to send in your stead. Yes. Is that good? President Fraser? Okay. President Pro tempore, you have your first obligation. You will have to preside over this part, because I am going to nominate myself for the Joint Governance Council, is that okay? You, um, if you really don't want to, I can appoint someone else. I will appoint one of the former Senate, or senators from before.
Pascal from Romance Studies, point of information, so what does preside involve?
You would stand, I mean, hopefully this, uh, if this election, if it's only four people, you would just take, you'd ask for nominations and seconds. And then, if only four people nominate themselves, then that's it, you're done, you don't need to do anything. If more than four people nominate themselves, then you will preside over the election. You'll just be like, okay, we're now going to move to elect these people, and you'll take a vote by, you can do it by show of hands. But that would be the obligations. If you're not ready to do that yet, totally understand, I can get one of the other senators who've been here before to do it.
Motion to make someone else do it.
Okay, that's fine. Senator Wren, since I don't think you want to be on the Joint Governance Council, um, you can preside.
I have a point of information real quick. Did we confirm that member, or that the graduate student appointees to the Joint Governance Council get stipends? And if so, what is said stipend amount?
There are no stipends for the Joint Governance Council. Only committees, standing committees.
Would you like to nominate yourself?
Yes, I move, sorry, I'm going to.
Go sit in your seat.
Senator Moreby, uh, Bioinformatics and computational biology. I move to nominate myself to the Joint Governance Council.
Is there a second? Seconded? Would anyone else like to nominate themselves?
Senator Freeman, Public Policy. Motion to nominate myself.
Senator Freeman, Public Policy, second? All right, that's two, we need two more. Senator Moreby, seconded. We really do need to fill these, they're quite important. Yes?
Senator Burson from Musicology, I would like to nominate myself.
All right, is there a second? Seconded by Speaker Moreby. We need one more person. President Fraser.
One of, I, to let y'all know, um, one of the things that JGC is going to be useful for is that there is a lot of money, between the undergrads and the grads currently from a student organization that we found was not doing anything that student fee money was going to. And so one of the things we are doing in Joint Governance Council is debating on how this money is split, where this money is going to. And if you want grad voices in that, we need people for JGC, please.
Thank you, President Fraser. Would anyone like to be that fourth person? Speaker Moreby.
Senator Homeyer from Math, all nominate to be the fourth.
Is there a second? Seconded by, what is her name? Senator from Anthropology, that brings us to four. Are there any other people who would like to nominate themselves or someone else at this time? Seeing none, I will assume that these four people are appointed unless I hear a objection. And Speaker Moreby, I will hand this back to you.
All right, thank you for very unenthusiastically nominating yourselves to the Joint Governance Council. All right, we're moving pretty fast. I'm actually quite happy that, you know, we're not going to be here for four hours. So now we move into new business. Pretty much all confirmations of the, in the executive branch. Quick, like administrative point, did everyone, was everyone able to access the HEAL Life? I know there was a lot of issues with being able to see the invitation. Thanks to Senator Wang, we figured that out. Is there anyone at this point who can't? Because we're going to be voting on HEAL Life. So it's really important that you see that you have access, or if you don't know how to get to it, also ask. Yes?
Senator Foster from Health Policy. It's unclear to me if I don't have access or if I just don't know how to get to it.
Okay, um, I'm just going to, do you mind if I come over there and take a look? Okay. Senator Foster, remind me your first name.
Nick.
Nick? Nathan, sorry. Yes, Brian. Okay, do they have access? Okay. I'll wait to start voting, yes.
Senator Wren, Linguistics. Uh, Speaker Moreby, could you explain to everyone who Brian is and why he is helpful?
Yes. Brian, he is back there in the gray shirt. He is our advisor, so he is the faculty or staff, I'm not sure what his position is, who is responsible for advising us, specifically the GPSG. All he does is just GPSG, so, um, you know, I'm sure he will say the same, but don't hesitate to contact him if you have any questions. I can always put you in touch with him. Committee chairs, uh, you should be in touch with Brian. He puts, you know, he puts through the stipends, he helps with P-card transactions if you want to do that for anything. Brian's awesome. Did I forget anything about Brian's duties, Senator Wren? Okay. Um, at this time, is there anyone else who doesn't have access to the HEAL Life, or doesn't know how to get to it? Senator Mersman.
My apologies, my phone is dead, so I literally cannot get to it.
Okay, so actually, that moots the entire controversy, because if you can't vote, we can't vote on HEAL Life, and so we will actually just conduct, um, either, yes. Okay, is that okay with you? No, okay, we have, never mind. I can also offer my computer for anyone who wants to vote as well. Sorry, seeing that it is not possible to have, um, everyone vote through HEAL Life, we will actually be voting through, um, I'm going to say, actually, we can, we can do it many ways. I will ask for motion for this, we can do a hand vote by our show of hands. We can do unanimous consent, or, which is basically like, are there any objections to this nomination? And if there are none, it's just passed. Or we can do a roll call vote, where I will go through every single person and ask their vote. Senator Rumpone does not want to do that. So, Senator Beck.
Senator Beck from Pathology, um, can I move that when we vote, we vote on all of the confirmations as one?
I would rule that out of order. Yes?
Senator Chapman, motion to vote by raise of hands.
Motion, sorry, what was the motion again?
Vote by a show of hands.
Okay, awesome. Second, any objections to voting by show of hands? Okay. It's not ideal, because I don't have the roster yet, but. All right. Alrighty, so we're gonna start with the first bill. So I'm going to put it up here since not everyone can see it. Because not everyone has access to the Heal Life yet or the capability to look at it, so let's do that. And we're just gonna share the full screen. Cool. All right. This is the resolution to confirm Jaden Smith as the Chief of Staff of the Graduate and Professional Student Body. Would we like to have the nominees speak for their nomination, or do we just want to vote on them? Hmm? No, the nominees would speak on their own behalf.
Information, point of information. Just for clarification, how were the nominations made for these positions? Really, really basic questions, I apologize.
Sorry, no, 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 no problem. I'm skipping over a lot because of things, so please ask me, ask me these questions. I will answer that. So President Frazier, so these positions are executive positions. The president has the power to nominate to them. These nominations were made over the summer, so specifically this one, if we look at the bill itself, and you all can have copies of this on the Heal Life. All bills will have this little table, and so it'll tell you when it was referred to, the committee that it was referred to. We use European-style dates on this, so it's the day first, then the month, so try not to let that confuse you. So this happened, I can't read that. The 28th of August was when the nomination went through. It went to the Summer Governance Legislative Committee, so over the summer, the committees don't meet. The Summer Governance Committee takes on their job effectively, and so the Summer Governance Committee over the summer does everything. And so Summer Governance reviewed it. There were three yeses, zero no's, zero abstentions, is what that says. And then it was referred to the speaker, and then now it's on the floor of the Senate. And so that is how the appointment process works. Does that answer your question? Cool. Any other questions? Or points of information? Yes?
Senator Ren Linguistics, point of information, can you clarify how these nominations got to President Frazier?
What do you mean, they got to President Frazier?
Were these people, did they, I know what they did because I sat on this committee, but for the new senators, can you tell them how these nominations reached President Frazier?
President Frazier, I feel like you should answer that question, so I'll let you.
They came into my house and knocked on my door. So the form for nominations, so people can nominate themselves, they can nominate other people. It was on Heal Life before I became president, and so the previous president opened it up. She put out an application on there, and they posted on the social media websites. They put it in various different emails from the grad school, from GPSG, and people themselves applied. And so from there, I had to do interviews with various different people, and then I nominated, or I recommended them to go to Summer Governance.
Does that answer your question to your satisfaction, Senator Ren? Cool. Yes, Senator Beck.
Senator Beck from Pathology, I motioned that each nominee gets like a minute to introduce themselves.
Okay. Any seconds to that motion? Any, we'll say Senator Rumpanty seconded that one. Any objections? All right, so we will start with Chief of Staff Jaden Smith. You will have one minute from when you start speaking to speak about yourself and why you should be confirmed.
Greetings, everybody. Again, my name is Jaden Smith, and I'm here as the Acting Chief of Staff. Since I've been in the position, I've been working in the role of Chief of Staff to execute all of the duties and responsibilities outlined in the code. One of the main things that I explained earlier was the external appointments. Historically, from talking to previous Chief of Staves, that was filled majoritively by the Senate. But as I read earlier, we only have those five committees left, so that was pretty much done. And I've also done this role in my undergraduate student government as well, so I'm just transitioning here to UNC. I think that's pretty much it for my one minute.
Right, thank you, Acting Chief of Staff, Smith. All right, does, does there, so at this point, for all the new senators, you have a couple options. You can motion for debate if, you know, you think this is controversial and you want to discuss whether or not you should appoint the Acting Chief, or confirm the Acting Chief of Staff, or you can move to call the question, which is effectively saying you're moved to start voting on this. Yes?
Senator Chapman, Physics and Astronomy, I'm just curious, as a point of information, about how many applications each of these positions got? How many applications did each of these positions get approximately? It doesn't have to be perfect.
I'm not gonna lie to you. This was done a couple months ago, and so I wanna, some positions got like three to four different ones, some of them got one. It just depends on the position.
Okay.
Senator Mersman from Pathology, I'm, I call a question.
All right, is there a second? Any objections to calling the question, meaning voting on this? All right, seeing none. All right, at this time, please raise your hand if you are in favor of confirming Jaden Smith as Chief of Staff. Okay, a lot of yeses. Hold on. All right, any, yes? Uh, all right. Okay. Any? How do I say this? All those not in favor of confirming the Acting Chief of Staff? Any abstentions, meaning that you've declined to vote? No, seeing that, then congratulations, you are now the Chief of Staff. All right. All right, we will move then to 002, which is the confirmation of Sayed Reza Duardian as the Treasurer of the Graduate and Professional Student Body. This is the legislative history of this bill. All right, Acting Treasurer, you have one minute to give us a speech by yourself.
Good evening, everyone. Hope you are doing real like, hope you are not tired from after all this meeting. I just want to state like the things that I've been doing from like September that I've been basically the active treasurer. I've had like a bunch of meeting, and I'm basically the member of different committees through the university, which is in charge of like the tuition, the fees, and the, let's say, some other problem, probably the hardship parking and many other that are presented in the code that I have to represent and have my votes and my ideas on them. Besides that, I've been taking care of the, with the help of, actually Omar, the previous Chair of the Finance. We've been taking care of the emergency funds and travel funds and like the reimbursement of them through the Heal Life and everything. Like the, basically the prizes and the awards that you people on the committees will be working on will go through me to be paid to the universities, and I think that's it.
Okay, cool. All right, is there a motion to call the question?
I moved to call the question, Senator Rumpanty.
All right, Senator Rumpanty called the question. Is there a second? Seconded by Senator Ren. All right, show of hands. All in favor of confirming the Acting Treasurer? All right, you can put your hands down. Okay, all those against confirming the Acting Treasurer? And all those abstaining? Okay. All right, so now, congratulations, you are in, Reza, you are now the Treasurer. All right, so on to 003, the confirmation of Cicely Xiao as the Vice President of Communications. It is my understanding that the Acting Vice President of Communications, Cicely Xiao, has a migraine today and was not able to be here. My sympathies go out to her. So there will be no speech unless, oh, has she nominated the president too? Okay. Does anyone want to hear from the president regarding this nominee? Or does anyone want to call the question or table this until the nominee can be here?
School of Government moved to call the question.
Okay, is there a second? Senator Beck seconded. All right. No objections? Cool. Seeing none, then by show of hands, all in favor of confirming Cicely Xiao as Vice President of Communications? Sorry, keep your hands up. Sorry, if you're... It's really hard to do a show of hands without a Vice President of Communications. Okay, you can put your hands down. All those against confirming the nominee? Zero against. Really struggling with this pen. Okay, there we go. And then all those abstaining. Rumpanty, Burson. Senator Lee, I didn't see your hand up for any of them. What was, what was it? What is your vote? You said yes? Okay, sorry, I didn't see your hand then. All right, moving on, then Cicely Xiao is now confirmed as the Vice President of Communications. Okay, Bex Nelson. I'm going to edit this to just say Bex. I was informed by Bex that they very much prefer to go by just Bex. And so we will edit that. There's no reason why we need to have it be Rebecca Bex Nelson. So I'm actually just gonna... Okay. Chair Nelson, or Acting Chair Nelson is actually on Zoom. Acting Chair Nelson, can you hear us?
Uh, yeah, I can hear you all just fine.
Did anyone, yes, okay. All right, Acting Chair Nelson, would you, you have one minute to give us a speech on why you should be confirmed to your position?
Yeah, hello, everyone. So I've actually been doing the, the role as the Chair of the Emergency Fund Committee for about a couple months now, reviewing emergency fund applications and trying to put those through the process to the committee with some new finance rules and laws. And I think that the process is becoming more well-established, and I think the records have, are like, yeah, I really enjoyed being a part of it. I think it's a really important piece of work to do, which is to give students who are in an emergency the funding that they need in that emergency. After the flooding, we gave, gave to students like maybe $7,000, which is really a wonderful thing to get to be a part of doing and helping people. I think we've done about 27 applications so far, but something that I'm really excited about in this role is removing some of the bottlenecks that exist. And actually, I am a part of that bottleneck, and I'm quite aware of that, where applications come through me, and I redact them, and I send them to committee, who I then ask to review in a timely manner, until there are enough reviewers to move forward with either approving, oh, sorry.
Acting Chair Nelson, that's time. Do you want to finish your sentence?
Yeah, I'm looking forward to continuing improving that process with the Dean of Students' Office.
All right, thank you. All right, is there a motion to call the question? Senator Beck moved, is there a second? Seconded by Senator Ren. Okay, and this is, which number is this one? 004, cool. All those in favor of confirming the Acting Chair? Okay. Okay, you can put your hands down. All those against? And all those abstaining? Cool. All right, congratulations, Acting Chair Nelson, you are now the Emergency Fund Chair.
They use them.
All right, next up is 005, the confirmation of Dev Gandhi as the Director of Data Collection and Assessment. He is currently the Acting Director of Data Collection and Assessment. Dev is, I believe, also on Zoom. Dev, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you good.
Dave, sorry. Correction, it's pronounced Dave. Would you, would you like to give us one-minute speech on your qualifications?
Sure, so, as my time as the Acting Director of Data Collection and Assessment, I have been leading efforts to analyze graduate student responses, including the AI Trend Survey with nearly 3,000 responses. We have been working with the Provost to present to the Board of Trustees, and I've also collaborated with other directors to help them create and analyze the different surveys that might go out to different, that might go out for different purposes.
All right, thank you. At this time, is there a motion to call the question? Is there a second? All right, that was motioned by Senator Ren and seconded by Senator Mersman. All right, all those in favor of confirming, Dave? All right. All those against? And all those abstaining? Cool. All right, congratulations, you are now the Director of Data Collection and Assessment. All right, last one. So to clarify, there is one more after this on the agenda, however. That actually has to go through the Oversight and Accountability Committee, so we will not be doing it today. All right, so now is the resolution to confirm Hannah Friedman as the Director of State and Local Relations. She is currently the Acting Director. Acting Director Friedman, you have one minute.
Hi. Hey, my name's Hannah Friedman. I'm a current PhD student in microbiology and immunology. I have been acting in this position, and so far, I have been able to set up meetings with our NC4 House of Representative Fushi's office, and then also met our NC2 Representative Ross in person. I would like to continue meeting with these offices and have relationships with potential candidates for the upcoming midterms and be able to act as a liaison, both for the voice of the student body to these candidates, and then also to represent what the candidates' viewpoints are to the student bodies, so we are more informed with our voting decisions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Acting Director Friedman. Do you have a motion to call the question?
Moved.
Motion by Senator Mersman, is there a second? Right, Thompson, Senator Thompson seconded? Oh, who's second? Oh, Beck, thank you. Senator Beck seconded. I knew it came from that general direction. All right, all those in favor of confirming Acting Director Friedman to this role? I love the enthusiasm, though. No worries. All right, all those against? And all those abstaining? All right, congratulations, Director Friedman. All right, so that puts us through at the end of new, new business. Now it's time for notices and announcements, just very briefly. In addition to the kind of informal, or the informal committee with the RNJ Chairs and Speakers for the Code of Permanent Laws, I do plan on starting two task forces. They don't necessarily need to include all senators, but if you want to participate on them, you are more than welcome to. But please do ask your friends if they would like to participate. They are related to basically an entire code revision, because again, we adopted a constitutional amendment that now changes a lot of what the code has to say. And so, you know, we will be reviewing the code to kind of adjust that and... and whatever other changes that might be deemed necessary. Task Force Number Two is a redistricting task force. We very much need to redistrict. Since the establishment of the district, there has been a lot of administrative change regarding what departments house which programs. And that has caused some issues with elections for some people. I don't want that to be the case. I want everyone to be able to participate in the Senate. So I have a redistricting task force that will be charged with kind of researching what the most fair districts for the Senate are and establishing those for the next election cycle. That's really everything. Oh, the other thing is committees, I do encourage you, everyone who's on a committee, to just get into the small groups after this, talk to each other, establish a date that you're going to meet, elect a chair. So you all have to decide on a chair. And then let me know who that chair is and give me just a roster of that committee. Senator Beck.
With that being said, now that we have a Student Organizational Award Committee, we are now taking applications for awards, meaning that please, please, please tell your constituents to apply. Not only does it cover student organizations, registered student organizations, but it also covers districts. So if you, as a district, are going to hold a qualifying exam, lunch and learn, or some kind of seminar that you would like pizza at, but your department doesn't give enough money or fund it, period, feel free to apply. With that being said, we will need to have applications processed before the next meeting, so that apply like now. And that is on Heal Life.
And that is on the GPSG Heal Life, not our Heal Life, confusingly. Well, we're going to have to change that. And then travel awards, you're going to have to decide what you want to do with the summer travel awards, whether you want to approve them and bring them to the floor or whatnot. We can talk about that with the Chairs. Chairs of Committees, we will, we are legally mandated to meet after, within one week of each Senate meeting. I don't anticipate that meeting to be very long most of the time. This first one might be a little bit longer because it'll be introductory. But again, so I recommend you get into your little committees, just very briefly, exchange contact information, elect a chair, let me know the full roster of the committee, including who that chair is, and then we will go ahead and have that meeting. Before you all get up, can I have a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Any objections? Okay. We're now adjourned.